Okay. Okay, welcome everyone. All this. Order rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just for you.
Oh, nice, thank you. I was at a town meeting for Newington and they had a nice flag flying on the screen. So I asked our able-bodied Kate to see what she was doing and she did it.
You're not gonna get anything else from me.
Okay.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Mayor Kuzynski, Councilor Luddy, Councilor Peonesa, Councilor Russell, Councilor Yonaga, Councilor Vich. Mayor, you have a form.
Yeah, they may be zooming in. Deputy Mayor Luddy and Councilor Vich later. They have both had some conflicts tonight unfortunately, so. Here, so. We are now in our audience of citizens, so now would be the time if anyone wishes to speak on either anything on the agenda or anything else that's on your mind about the beautiful town of Brolin.
I would like to speak, I'm on Zoom.
Okay. Sure.
My, yeah, I'll start the camera, so you know who you're talking to. If my camera works, that is, sorry about that. Not well. Alright, so my name is Marie Mocelli and I reside at 269 Circlewood Drive. My home abuts Pistol Creek. I am opposed to the proposal to use an area of Pistol Creek for an unleashed, an unfenced dog park. I, as well as others, have property abutting Pistol Creek. This would truly impact the day-to-day activities of those surrounding Pistol Creek if dogs were running off-leash. Don't get me wrong, I love dogs and I have a dog. However, I walk around the trail on a leash and I use waste bags to pick up after her. Unfortunately, many people do not use waste bags. Therefore, there'll be a con- there may be a concentrated area of dog defecation. I have encountered unfriendly dogs on the trail as well. Having an off-leash area near homes where the public walks, in my opinion, is not a safe option. While there are many, many dogs that are friendly, it only takes one that isn't friendly. And I certainly encountered them. I know that many of the kids in my neighborhood cut through my yard with my permission to access the trail where they ride their bikes and their skateboards. Many of them walk through as families and will be walking all through the trails. In fact, I can see the entire tr- well, I can see this part of the trail right out my kitchen window and there are tons of people out there all the time walking with their dogs on leash and just with their families. What about the beautiful horses whose owners ride them on the trail? Will tho- will the dogs chase them and scare them? I am sure this area will also attract many out-of-town dog owners who are looking for an unleashed dog park, adding to traffic on Spruce Brook Road. While I know there is one in Cromwell, I did notice that it has very poor ratings. The area is also used in the fall for the BHS track teams. You just imagine a dog or more than one dog chasing those runners. What if one of those kids gets bitten? Who will be responsible? And lastly, who ha- I really wanna know who had this terrible idea. I am a dog lover, but I am not going to support this proposal. I may consider supporting it if it's fenced in so that dogs can't get out onto the trail and um get into trouble with people that may be walking the trail, etc. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, my argument, you just said it all, okay. That's if this was the 249 One Step Road right next to the bicentennial park, which has been used as a leash-free dog park for sixteen years. For sixteen years, we have tried to get the town council, we've tried conservation, we have gone to every commission to get the dog leashed. So every argument you said about Pistol Creek, we've been saying about the bicentennial park. I agree with you, you put a park over there in Pistol Creek, we put a fence around it. I walk into Pistol Creek, I can't get into bicentennial, I live right next door to it. The stories I could tell you about what was done in that park. And by the way, if you have read, I think it's Roland Talk or Roland Buzz, there was a runner or bicyclist who was bitten by a dog recently. Now, I don't know if it was reported to you, the town is liable. Not only is the dog on the liable, the town is liable because this town has been aware for sixteen years of the problems that exist. We have traffic all the time. That because the police commission signs up in front of the last five houses, we are, there's no parking lot, I can't park in front of my own house. Finally, I'm happy about it, but it is, it's been a dangerous situation. We, I can't tell you how many people come down there, they wait in line for parking, they speed on the road. I'm tired of it. If you wanna put the dog park over in Pistol Creek, you gotta put a fence around it. You really have to, and please get them out of our neighborhood. It's been a danger for sixteen years and I'm sick and tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Yeah.
I am Paul Griswold. I reside at 336 Polgate Road. I am a, I was a citizen of Brolin and I tell you right now, I'm not against dog parks. I have, I've had a dog of my own, my kids have dogs. I'm just opposed to having it at Pistol Creek for a couple of reasons. One is because I'm there probably more than a lot of you. Between the cross-country teams, walking there, I used to do robotics up at the cabin at Pistol Creek. I see, I've seen that park grow from nothing, an overgrown park of trees and brush being cleared out. And I, and I just, I wrote, I prepared something here, but I looked at some of the reviews online. People love this park because of its walking trails, because of the way it's accessible to people with young kids. They can ride bikes, they can use strollers, people in wheelchairs. In fact, Pistol Creek is listed in the top ten for ADA compliant parks in Connecticut. It's number seven right now. And this was before the handicap parking was put in and before the trail was redone. And the trail that was redone, which has wheelchair parking with a bench, is gonna be right in the middle of where they want to put this dog park. So, you know, you took three steps forward and now you're taking two steps back to put a dog park there. Pistol Creek is a very special place. And if we allow a dog park in Pistol Creek, the natural beauty and tranquility will be lost. The proposed area for the dog park is one of the prime walking viewing areas in the park. When you walk into this park, it's the first thing you see. You can see from the road all the way back to the bridge at the far end. This allows a very expansive view, a level walking or riding area for the disabled and young children riding bicycles and tricycles. There isn't a park like this in the central Connecticut area. And where else can you go where people of all ages and abilities can enjoy being close to nature? The birds, fox, coyotes, rabbits, frogs, an occasional bobcat, which I've seen up there, and be seen as you walk the beautiful car track. The all-weather feature makes this a great place for people. It's extremely safe for families with young children. Many of our streets in town do not have sidewalks where children can safely walk or mothers can push a stroller or the disabled can use their wheelchairs. And this is the only park in Brolin without ball fields. But when you go there, the parking lot, when you look there, there's gotta be thirty or forty cars sometimes parked. And people love this park for what it is, and this is without the dog park being. And it's probably one of the most widely used parks in town. You may go into Sage Park and see a lot of cars parked, but they're probably there for a soccer game or a baseball game or a football game and not just there to enjoy the park. And to get this many people to show up just to enjoy a park, it's amazing. And it says a lot for the town to have a place like this. Speaking on behalf of my team that I coach, about the high school and middle school cross-country teams that use Pistol Creek for over fifteen years, middle school did so with the blessing of a former comm manager. She encouraged us to use it with the hope that more people would take advantage of this facility. As, as well as an address, an address sign on the road to help with directions. The main pathway is a key component of the cross-country course. And this is where the teams gather to do their stretches and it's the start and finish lines for the middle school. It is very open and viewer-friendly. It's one of the few areas on the course that parents can watch and visit. And I've never heard a bad review from visiting coaches or parents. They all are amazed the town has this beautiful park because of this many, many of the out-of-town parents will come back and use the park. There has been, there has, there has to be an alternate site in town. And one such I was thinking of was the community garden on Orchard Road. And I was told that the parking would be an issue over there, but it's a flat area and I was wondering if you can make and push the parking lot and make it, expand it, make it better. There is very few, I don't think there's many homes around that area. And if you push it back far enough and fence it in, it will not interfere with the gardeners. And what I say in closing is let's not ruin what we have. Let's keep Pistol Creek the special place for our people in our community. Thank you for letting us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Cleveland.
Hey. Donna Bovee, as you know.
Yes.
Parker Rec Commission, I'm here representing the Parker Rec Commission regarding the dog park at Pistol Creek. Want to provide you our thoughts and share commentary that we receive via emails and constructive comments that are noted on Facebook regarding the proposed unleashed dog park. And one thing that I would say, the citizen does a very poor job of presenting information that's out there that are major items here in town. I've tried to get them to do some things. No luck. Unfortunately, Facebook is what we got. There are some very constructive comments and I urge all of you to get on Facebook, read them. You don't have to respond, but you'll get some input. And if you wanna follow up with certain individuals, you could do that. Last July, the Parker Rec Commission provided a summary of our thoughts regarding Pistol Creek to the ordinance committee and offered to provide any further input. The main points that we brought up were that due to the heavy traffic of walkers, all types of families, including handicap individuals, including this children's summer camp that we run at Pistol Creek and used by the high school and middle school for cross-countries, dogs should be leashed. That's what we asked. We also asked that the council get in touch with the A.D. and coaches to be contacted to provide further input due to their use. So now that the map identifying the location of a proposed unleashed dog park has been released to the public, we've gotten various emails from the coaches. I thank Paul for coming tonight. There is, both schools had a track meet, so people are tied up as they told me. Hopefully some are still on, but, or can be on, but if not, reach out to them. They use this park continually for the cross-country meets, for the practices, and the area is right in smack in the middle of where they're running. As Paul mentioned, they start and finish there for the middle school, the high school path for running. There's concern over leftover dog feces and I know that the, the, the dog owners have been pretty responsible, I think, overall. But even now, there's some dog feces at Pistol Creek and there's a concern from the parents and coaches that there may be more and you may have some slip of flaws while those kids are running. Spectators watch from that area for the meets. I want to just say personally, my biggest issue, but also Parker Rec Commission's issue, is the town-installed handicap parking at that Spruce Brook side of the area being proposed. And the asphalt paths in that strip is the easy path and it's wider to make it more accessible to those that are handicapped. It can also be easily used by families using strollers, maybe many children at once, and for older people, just because it's wider. If that unleashed dog park is placed in the area identified, the handicap parking pathways were a total waste of money. What's the plan to replace it for people that are handicapped if it goes there? Parks and Rec runs a summer camp for children across the way, mainly behind the clubhouse. But there are times during the week, three or four times during the week, we'll bring the children over specifically to that area. As people may understand, again, it's an easy path, it's, it's a beautiful view. It's great for kids to run in that area. They bring them over, from what I understand, the kids love it. It's very different than the back of the clubhouse where the bulk of their activities are. They wouldn't stop using that side of the street due to the unleashed dog park, they would have to. Some kids may be fearful and you don't necessarily wanna have loads of kids with loads of unleashed dogs for various safety reasons. Same goes for walkers. Those, as you've heard from a couple of comments already, go there. It's, it's such a great asset for this town. There are various comments on Facebook, some pro, most, at least at this point, are against the unfenced, unfenced area due to safety risks. One person commented that if you're going to an unleashed dog park in Pistol Creek, use the difficult trails area. That might be something. With all this said, we believe the council should consider two other potential areas. Chair property off Orchard Road, which is what Coach Griswold just mentioned. May not have as much activity from the public as far as walking, there is some. And I know the community garden is there and you may have to expand some parking. I don't know if there are any other restrictions on that use of the property. It's not under the purview of Parks and Rec. Pistol Creek, at the corner of Atkins and Division Street, this is across the street, along Division Street and across is Maxson's Bar. There are three lots that are Berlin property. Those three lots compromise about five acres of property. If you need to do it at Pistol Creek, yes, we have parking there. Our suggestion would be that would maybe an ideal location, although the town would need to clear some brush, there's some smaller trees that have grown in, in that area. But possibly if cost is an issue, you do it at basis. There's certainly some areas the dogs could run right now. Perhaps there are volunteers that would help lower the cost of clearing that property. I do know the town would need to notify Middletown. I guess you'd have to put this to planning and zoning because Middletown property abuts that area and anything within five hundred feet has to be notified to that property owner, and that would be the town of Middletown. I don't believe Middletown could do anything to say you can't do it, but I do know they need to be notified. There's a natural buffer on Division Street with the shrubberies that have grown around that side. Again, parking at the clubhouse and it's an area that's not handicap accessible. And it's not used by the schools and it's not used by the camps. There are walkers, I was over there today, there are some walkers over there because it's a more difficult trail. It is very pretty, but perhaps this is a compromise. Appreciate you listening and as always, the Parker Rec Commission is available to help on any one. Thank you.
Based on. Yes, sir.
Dan Thurston, 16 Conlon Way.
No worries.
Good, how are you there? Good, good. It's great to see people coming out to talk about the dog park today and feel as you haven't into Pistol Creek, whether it's the first few weeks of the spring, summer, or all when the leaves are changing, it really is an intergenerational space that's been described. See young families, I'm gonna go there with my two children and we can take the stroller throughout and see people jogging. See older people who are making use of these easy pathways through. As we talk about Pistol Creek and on the discussion today is the community center and senior center for the town of Brolin. But let's keep in mind, absolutely keep in mind that this community and senior center can take on the same role that we're seeing Pistol Creek currently take for large parts of the town of Brolin. As an intergenerational space, a space that really serves the whole public, I guess have a chance to come together and see and a useful place I use around as, make some of the key decisions based on the reports of the commission that you're going to have to make over the next few weeks. Please keep in mind the spirit of the statements we need both by Parks and Rec and by the Commission on Aging. So we really can't have something that's of value to all the generations, all the age range in, in the town of Brolin and something that we can be proud of for decades to come.
Thank you. Next? Yes, sir.
Kidder Zero Bozo, 158 Elwood Road. Just heard a comment against the post-off-leash dog area of Pistol Creek for many of the reasons other citizens have outlined. We already have a satisfactory location for an off-leash dog park, which is used by small people at bicentennial park. Ever since it has been updated to have signage to indicate that it is an off-leash area over the past three months in a temporary fashion, it seems that it's kind of regulated itself. I remain concerned that the opposition to the off-leash dog park area at bicentennial park is only front, if you will, for preventing access to that park via Line Sap Road. This is a park that can be used by anyone, including dog walkers, and it should, access should be preserved. Previous comment who said that parking prevented along Line Sap Road, it's my understanding that that was asked for by the neighbor, the neighbors in that area due to complaints of a lot of parking. And I know that this issue stretched back fifteen years. However, I think that the council should be very cognizant of the fact that Line Sap Road is a primary access point for bicentennial park and it should be preserved by any means necessary. Thank you.
Right. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Michael Parsick, 28 Cornfield Drive. And as a former runner for Brolin High School, I think that Pistol Creek is a great spot for a lot of people, not just myself, to run and jog and have a good time with family and friends. And I feel that coming to dog park it isn't necessary because dogs are already over there and they're already playing around, having fun. And I feel that leaving the space the way it is is the best thing down. Thank you.
Okay, you're still, you're still a runner, right? Yes. Yeah, there you go. All right, that's good. Yes, sir.
Adam Alde Serra, 158 Kensington Road. Mike Young, Graham of my son, Coach, Coach, my kids, both of them. I agree, Pistol Creek, it's a great place for people, it's the way it's set up now. I think my biggest issue is the whole idea of an unleashed or an unfenced area, it just kinda doesn't make any sense. And it's kind of in a gray area, it's on this whole thing where people don't know if it's fenced or not. Why are we even here discussing something, we're just gonna put dogs in an unfenced area, it makes no sense at all. So, again, maybe it's a citizen's fault, whoever's fault it is, but there's some kind of direction needs from the residents that would maybe not make these meetings so necessary. And I kinda echo someone's statement where he just went sad. Bicentennial, I get people that live there, this Sporski. I would get, you don't want a lot of people there, but I don't know if that neighborhood allows you just to control that area because it is a park. I, I guess the big stumbling block is why can't we increase the parking in any of these parks that we have? There's so much of a bicentennial and that huge field that's there. I can access it in my backyard. I've never understood why you can't just push it more so people don't have to park along their front yard or in the circle. I mean, there's a limited amount of space there.
Well, well, but, but, oh, I'm.
Yeah, okay, so either way, cut it, plow, put gravel, whatever you gotta do. Same thing on the spot on Orchard Road. I mean, that's a really small parking area. It gets filled in by when people are gardening there, which is great. I think that's awesome that it's there, we can hike and bike and access there as well. That can be pushed up because that's basically a field that just, we pay people to mow and that's it. If you put gravel or anything, whatever you want, that could increase it. You put a fenced area there, a proper area for dogs, that would make more sense. Again, I'll give you the fact that Pistol Creek's already been set up as a place. It's pretty established as to what it's for, it's done a great job. There's an abandoned golf course, we turned it into something great. People use it, people walk their dogs on leashes there already. So it's kinda used in a pretty responsible way. The fact that we're just bringing this up seems silly. Either give the people in bicentennial, the people that live there, a better way to live so they don't have to access all these cars, you're absolutely trash or making noise or whatever. Whatever you're talking about. Oh, cut into the field, make more parking, use it on Orchard, put more parking in there. And I think that would basically eliminate all this stuff. If you're gonna call it a dog park, Colleen, I drove through in primal the first time, just dog area there. It's all fenced in, two fenced areas, one for big dogs, one for small dogs. Again, nothing should be unfenced. If you're gonna create a dog park, make sure that it's fenced in. Alright, that's it. Go Celtics.
Thank you. Just, just, so. You know, social media is great in some regards and it's bad in many regards too. You know, we haven't made any decisions yet, this is a proposal. We've been talking about this for a while, so we don't have any final decision. And I did see some comments out there, I mean, the council hasn't decided anything yet. So, you know, it's great, you guys are here talking to us and that's what it's about. So just, you know, keep that in mind. So some of the things I say out there, like we already made this decision and it's unfenced, it's unleashed and so, and, and we've taken a lot of time to look at this and I'm not saying this is gonna be the final place because we haven't made that decision yet. And unfortunately, bicentennial park has its own issues, it's conservation. We bought it with federal money, so there's, there are many restrictions there. The problem at the end of the cul-de-sac there is, we looked many years ago when I was in planning and zoning, we looked, we wanted a parking lot there, but it's aquifer and we can't dig it up. So we really can't put a parking lot there as much as we might like to. And the other side there on Orchard Road has other issues in that field too. And the Conservation Commission, although it's the town of Berlin Conservation Commission, they're against it there and they are voted against the, you know, the off-leash area there. And of course, it's, it's under their purview and a lot of this, again, has to do with the funding of how we bought that property. But hence, we're looking at some other areas. But again, nothing final has been, no decisions have been made. We've got some proposals and, you know.
Yes. Yeah. Sorry. What it's for, it's okay, we're happy to hear from our residents all the time.
Eddie Bednar, 79, One Sap Road. It seems that every couple of months we all get together. Dog park, bicentennial dog park people here, bicentennial dog park people against it over there. Now, tonight and last week, I've seen many, many issues with having an unleashed dog park at Pistol Creek. Line Sap Road has issues with parking. It's a public place, anybody can park there. Our main issues were with unleashed dogs that are let out of the car in the parking lot that go into neighbors' yards. That's our main issue. The parking, it is a problem, however, it's not the main problem. Pistol Creek has a million good points. The basic thing is, the town, or the majority of the town, does not want unleashed dogs free to roam. It seems the easiest solution is to not allow unleashed dogs in any park. Why is it okay to have a, you have to have a law that there's a leash dog on the street? Is it any less dangerous to have an unleashed dog in the park? I don't understand. It just doesn't make any sense to me. The issue is the unleashed dog. And if the law is the law and all the dogs must be leashed, there's not a problem anymore. You wanna have a fenced-in area, find an area that's fenced in for the dog. You want to have a fenced in area, find an area that's fenced in for the dogs, but allow the people do not want their dogs to be fenced in. And that seems to be the main problem. I don't understand. It is fifteen years of coming every couple of months, one side here, one side there. It's, it's ridiculous. The fact of the matter is dogs should be leashed. Final one. Thank you.
Yes.
Mary Catherine LaRose, twenty six, Woodruff Lane, excuse me, Kensington, um. I'm also a member of the conservation, so I thought I would state that also. Um, I wanted to, um, say something because I was part of the, I'll call it a search committee that went to pistol creek with our town manager with, um, Steve Wood, um, Michael. Thank you, Lorenzo. And, um, Peter Russell, actually, right? And we went out to pistol creek as an exploratory team to look at the possibility of having an off leash area there. And there were some positives to the spot that was being proposed. That being, and I'm comparing it to bicentennial because bicentennial is the place I've used for many years and so many have. It has natural buffers on either side of this former fairway with very rough, um, growth that would be very difficult for the dogs. They wouldn't probably want to go through it. So, um, it's, it's a fairway with natural buffers on either side. And when Steve Wood was talking, we, we were shown where it would start, which would be significantly up and over probably to the probably the old woman's tea box maybe. And then it only went a certain distance up the fairway and then stopped way before, way before the bridge that comes in so that there wouldn't be any conflict with people that would be taking other trails. And the dogs, and there was going to be just some, some natural fencing, but not fencing in the, the whole area, just to designate this is where it starts. This is where it ends. So we went and I was very open minded about it and I said, yeah, this could work. I mean, it's not perfect. But it could work. And so maybe people from bicentennial would, you know, want to try this out and, and see how the off leash area would be. After that, of course, we've heard lots of, you know, problems with more use than I think we were aware of the day that we went. Um, so I think it's just a matter of seeing if some modifications can be made and maybe this pistol creek area still could work. Now I'm going to speak from the conservation commission and the bit. Um, the conservation commission absolutely does not want any piece, not one inch, not one foot of conservation land being off leash. So we are hogtied. Um, the only land that the town has that's open space, although I did hear that there's some land that Donna mentioned, um, is pistol creek because it's, it's not under conservation purview. In the past, bicentennial wasn't under conservation purview either. It was under parks and recreation. So as a dog lover and a, a person who loves to go with my dogs occasionally and join other dog owners and let them romp and play off leash. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I want to continue being able to do that. I know there are many people that want it, not many. Because when I say many, you're gonna think like fifty, sixty people showing up there. I'm talking about ten, fifteen people. Um, I went once last week on an off time and there was nobody for my dog to play with. And then I went another day on Friday, actually, at five o'clock. And there were about six cars. So that's not terrible for a Friday afternoon at five after work. I can't say I've been on a Saturday or Sunday lately. So I just say, you know, we have to try to work together, see if something can work. So that no, not everyone's gonna be happy. It's just like an election, you know, not everybody's gonna be happy. But we can, gonna try to do what's right and do what's right for the majority of the people. And I thank you. And I want to say it was brave to even suggest this and just get it out there as a plan and just to look at it that way. Um, but it's certainly not, I know it's not carved in stone and, and, um, so it's just a matter of just a discussion right now and we'll see where it goes. And I was happy to be part of it. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? She's having to answer it. What's, what's the difference between a conservation commission and open space here? So if you look at bicentennial, it looks like pistol creek, right? What, what, what changed bicentennial to make a conservation?
So it's the way we purchased that land with the funding. So the, the town, the town, the town.
Like why do they control? Why do they just oversee that and not oversee it? How it's owned or?
It's the, it's the purchase of the, the funding that we used. Federal government funding. So there's restrictions that come with that funding and of course.
Bicentennial is always.
Yes.
See, she says.
Adam, you may, you're too good for that. And then you should come up and.
Yeah.
Know what I learned is they can't hear you at home. That's why.
Yeah.
That's better.
Well, 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 uh, we'll answer, answer that further, but yeah. If you want to, but we'll, we'll get to it.
I'm not the V L, you know, authority on that. I just know that I've been going to bicentennial for almost forty years, probably around forty years. And there was a time when it was parks and rec and there were different signs and it was more dog friendly and off leash friendly. And then when conservation took it over, it was prohibited, but ignored. Sorry.
Can you make a comment regarding the parking lot?
I'm sorry, you have to be recognized by the mayor. So let the mayor bring people up, okay? So Marie, you have to wait.
Okay, what do I do then to make a comment? Do I do anything or just he knows and I wait?
Yeah, hang on.
Okay, no problem.
Saying is correct. The money that purchased the bicentennial park for conservation purposes only because of the aquifer, okay? That runs through it. Fifty percent with the government, twenty five percent with the town of Berlin, twenty five percent with the state, the state of Connecticut. It was always conservation, always, always. It's like been the first, one of the first pieces of property that this town wisely bought for conservation, all right? Parkland for some reason was in charge of it. The sign that you see that says all dogs must be leashed went up in two thousand seven. It was not run by the town council. The town council just never reinforced it. That's why people were allowed to mainly take it over for dogs. I walked my dogs here for years. But other people were getting in there too. Now it's basically ninety five percent people with dogs, all right? You have to live next to it to understand how disheartening it is. There's somebody there six o'clock in the morning, all right? You know, they're all day long. You may come up and there's only six cars. Come down on a Sunday morning, fifteen cars. Come down when they're gathering and it's opening up the park and talking. Try to walk down there. They're gathering at the large, right before you're going to that old metal area. And they're talking. You cannot get, if I stop walking down there. So it's always been conservation material, um, land. It has never not been conserved. And now conservation's taken over and said, you need to preserve that for future generations because it is a source of water. And you can see it. You know where the stream runs through? Do you walk down over the ridges? But there's also, yeah, yeah, from steel, I believe, the aquifer. And that's to answer your question. And thank you for letting me do this.
All right, thank you. Okay. So what?
Jim Mahoney's on and he may able, he might be able to give you some information as far as the conservation on.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the, if you'd like, um, Jeff, Jeff Danafrio also, uh, you know, we, we, um, we did research this issue recently and, you know, did title searches and such and there, there are, you know, the, and that, and it is correct that, uh, the pro, the property was bought with state and federal, a lot of state and federal funds and it's restricted to open space conservation type use.
Okay. Okay, if, uh, anyone else?
Me or, just ask a quick question to Jim.
Sure. Right. Uh, Jim, just a quick question on the property that extends on Orchard Road, which was mentioned in the audience earlier. Is that, is there the same issue with that land as well and that is conservation land as well?
It is, it is, it was acquired with, um, uh, granted the state and there is a conservation easement. It is a different conservation easement. So, you know, again, if the town wanted to pursue that, um, we certainly have to, you know, have council look at the conservation easement and see whether that would be allowed and, and certainly, you know, consult also with the E E P, but it may not be allowed because of the conservation easement.
Yeah, Jack, for the benefit of yourself being new, we've picked that property already and, you know, I figure it's kind of determined that. Okay, so well, anyone else before we close?
Marie wanted to speak again. Marie.
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead, Marie, and then I'll take the gentleman back. Hang on a second. Yes.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, so I just wanted to make a comment about, uh, someone saying that the parking lot isn't always very full. Um, I wanted to, wanted the council to note that a lot of people that walk on the trails are literally from the neighborhood as well. There's tons of people here. My, actually, the majority of my neighbors that walk come right down the side of my yard. I allow them to walk through and it's constant. Um, the weekends are always packed as well. I have a total perfect view. Because like I said, my, I'm at the bottom of, of Circlewood Drive, so my property totally abuts, uh, this part of the trail. Lots and lots of people going through, but I think you're not seeing a ton of people in the parking lots, although I think they're pretty full. It's because you have a lot of people from Savage Hill Road and from Circlewood Drive that just walk over and walk the trail. That's quite a number of people.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I, I will say I was there Sunday afternoon. There were a lot of crickets. I'm sorry to say that line. Um, there, there wasn't a lot of people. There were six cars in the parking lot and there was I saw no one on the walking trail, but that's one day out of, out of time and I, I go there myself once in a while, but I guess we'll finish with comments. You'll be next. Or I just want to say that, you know, we have two thousand acres of open space in Berlin. I think we can share it with everybody somehow. We'll, we'll, we'll find a way. I, 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 we, we hear you. But two thousand acres, I think we can find something perhaps to make most people happy. Perhaps, uh, we'll try our best, but yes, sir.
I'm Chris Cookson, real five, Brooklyn, I'm a parent of two cross country runners. He, uh, they've had a great time at pistol creek. I think it'd be a shame if the team was not able to set up space forward. Um, as I understand the current design proposed as well, completely block off the path that goes through that area.
Not completely, you know, again.
A gates.
It's all, it's all proposed, you know, keep that line.
So on top of losing the space for the students, I if people have to walk through fenced in dog park, I've got safety concerns. The friendliest dog can easily over, it's excited running around in a fenced in fenced in area. And so I think that really would effectively close it off as street traffic and that's the main way in the park. Uh, and it's a great space the way it is.
There's, there's another gentleman on, um, so David.
David, go ahead.
Yes, could you hear me? Can you hear me?
Gotcha.
Hi, my name is Dave. My name is Dave Frankelange. I'm the athletic director, um, at Berlin High School. I'm sorry I'm not able to attend in person. I have multiple events going on, uh, at stage right now. So I apologize if I'm not there in person. Um, I just wanted the town council to, to be aware of previously what the, what the gentleman just had said, um, in terms, in terms of our staging area. Um, our course for both McGee and the high school, um, the area that I saw, we, we run through there. And if there's dual meets or, or try meets, uh, you know, I'm concerned about the space being right there. Um, I agree with what somebody had said just recently about there's ample space. I'm just concerned about that area right there because, uh, uh, of the nature of our, uh, our race. Um, the, the mileage that it has to be for both middle school and the high school. I know both of our coaches over the past couple of years, from when we moved from Sage over to pistol creek, we've had a tweak our, our runs a couple of, uh, and, and meets a couple of times, uh, regarding that. And I just hope that, that's not going, going to interfere with, um, you know, the decision that's being made um, with this. So if, if there are plans, you know, moving forward, um, I would love to be in the conversation, uh, more intently. Um, and, and perhaps, um, you know, questions that, that come up now, tomorrow, the next day, that I could be involved in, in any process to help out. Uh, you know, coming up with a, with, with a, with a solution.
Hey Dave, while you're on, question for you?
Yes.
Um, you guys are running there. I assume you're running on the paved surface?
We run on the paved surface and we're also running, uh, through the course itself. So we're not just running on the paved surface, but, but that's partially correct.
Okay.
Our start, our starting area and staging area is right where that, um, where, where the that hole, whatever that hole is where the huge fence is going to be, uh, uh, put in or not put in, but, uh, discussed. That's where we start our meets.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, yes, sir. Yeah. Yes, sure.
Your basement.
You said. Green game. College game road, college student McGee, uh, cross country team. Um, yes, we do use that area like Dave said, and, uh, just, just a little history on that. We used to be at Sage Park. And the problem with Sage Park is all the blacktop. Uh, we were running across parking lots. We were running on the access road coming in and it was very unsafe. And, uh, there were parents coming in in the evening for soccer, football, all kinds of activities. So we with permission went over to pistol creek mainly for safety. And we stayed on that side of the road. Originally, the high school coach wanted to use both sides with the sun setting. You know, coming down the road there, it, you can't see. So we kept everything on that one side. Um, I think any kind of dog park in that, on that fairway would be, uh, pretty restrictive to us. Um, it's just a beautiful part of the park as well. I mean, you're gonna take that away from, from people and, and there's kids that play there. They fly kites. It's, it's, you may have not seen too many cars there on Sunday because I think it was a pretty hot day. And when you go there first thing in the morning, there's a lot of cars there. When you go in the evening around supper time or after, it's usually pretty populated. But on a hot summer day, you're not gonna see too many people, uh, walking the trails because there's not a lot of shade there when you walk. So um, if any of the council members have never been to pistol creek, you gotta go out there and walk it just to, just to see what it's like in order to really, um, make any decisions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so on audience of citizens, this might be the record of one of the one or audience here, which is, which is, okay. Uh, we're happy to have you all here. Believe me, we love to hear from you. That's very reluctant representative. So we appreciate all your thoughts. We're wrapping up or no, we have more comments. Certainly open to some more, maybe no more repeat speakers and we can, uh, anyone else? Hasn't spoken. That was your chance. Okay. Well said. We're good. Okay. I appreciate everybody, uh, speaking up. Again, remember it's proposed. We'll have a, a little bit more discussion tonight. I'll make any decisions tonight. Uh, so, you know, we'll, we'll take all that information and we appreciate it. So we'll go ahead and close the audience of, of citizens. And we will move on to the mayor's update. Well, we've had enough of the mayor of, of updates tonight, so we'll, we'll get him to move on. From that, we're our consent agenda, our meeting agenda. Uh, on our consent agenda, we have seven topics, um, from the Berlin control, um, giveaway event at the Berlin control on, on Saturday, a month, once a month, uh, for the, for the months of June, July and August, from eleven to two. Topic two is accept, uh, donations to the Berlin control donation account for a hundred and fifty dollars and hamster supplies valued at thirty dollars. We're gonna accept some monetary donations, totally eight thousand dollars at the Berlin Pickle Mall Library deposit, some into the special grant donation fund. And, uh, some other deposits into our friends in the library miscellaneous account to purchase various supplies and museum passes. Number four, except donations of a thousand twenty five to the, to let the financial account for the police department. I'm gonna call town meeting on June seventh, that for the purpose of voting to. We're going to call a town meeting on June 7th, for the purpose of voting to accept the non-budget appropriation of the state of Connecticut local prevention council, the amount of $2,050 for deposit in the local prevention council revenue account. And appropriate those funds to the local prevention council expenditure account, uh, for social services. Number six, approve the request of the Kensington Congressional Church, the wave wall piece associated with having Berlin police support their festival on the hill on Saturday, June 11th. And improve 2012 club hosting a 2022 Connecticut amateur qualifier waving green speeds as requested. So those are our seven consent items. I know the members of the council have reviewed this before. Do we have any, any comments or questions on this? Hearing none, go ahead and take a motion.
We will, we accept that.
Take your second on that?
I can pass.
Thanks. Uh, if there's no other comments or questions, vote on the motion. All's in favor. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Close. And so, all right, so our consent agenda on to our, we have a public hearing on our affordable housing plans. And let's come to the council. Plan for, uh, make sure we have any public comments that's been out there. Better for affordable housing, uh, many members, uh, that, that prepared this. This is based upon some state legislation that we need to send this to the state legislature by June. Um, so we'll go ahead and call the public to order and, um, purpose, as I mentioned, the Berlin, uh, affordable housing plan and, um, it's dated, they, or the date of April 6th, 2020, sorry, it was published that April 12th, 2022. So now we have our public comments, uh, section of the public.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Great. Yes.
So the, all yours. I just don't. Can you hear us? Just put yourself on mute. Unmute and speak, please. FHI.
Yeah, I'm, I, I couldn't clearly hear you. Uh, thank you, Francisco Gomes with FHI Studio. And if you are now handing things over to us, we have a brief presentation for you. And with that being said, I, I don't know, uh, Jim, if you want to make, uh, introduce us here to get things started or, or Jennifer.
You know, FHI Studio is the consultant for the plan. We've presented it previously to the council. This is the public hearing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Francisco.
Okay, thank you. Uh, as Jim mentioned, we have a, a brief presentation. Uh, and by way of introduction, once again, Francisco Gomes, FHI Studio. We're a consultant hired by the town to assist with development of the plan of conservation and development, which is ongoing, and the affordable housing plan for which you, you have a draft before you. Um, we have a very brief presentation that I will try to keep as brief as possible because I, I know you have a full agenda this evening. And I think it'll help provide some context for the plan and orient you with the scope of the plan. Uh, so first of all, the affordable housing plan is requirement of Connecticut statute 830J, which is relatively new requirement that requires every municipality in Connecticut to complete or update a plan at least once every five years. And this will be Berlin's first plan. And, uh, so presumably, uh, you, uh, you have another five years before you need to get ready for this process again. Uh, and the adoption of this plan by, uh, June 1st is required by the state. So it's timely that we're taking action on this now. The affordable housing plan has some required elements and many of those are laid out in an affordable housing plan and process guidebook. We pretty much follow that to the T. And so the plan that you have before you for Berlin is a comprehensive plan that addresses all of the required elements of the affordable housing plan, and I would say goes above and beyond, actually. We started this process in, in December. Well, it actually started before then, but it formally got started in December. Uh, we've had a committee leading us through this process. Uh, the town's corporation, the council's been involved every step of the way, along with Jim Mahoney and Maureen, in, in guiding the development of the plan that you have before you. Uh, the committee met several times and, uh, with, with myself and, and with other representatives in discussion of the, the needs of the community with respect to affordable housing. Uh, one of the issues or one of the items that we're seeking to address through the plan are, is the 830G statute. And eight, uh, for those of you not familiar, uh, Connecticut statute 830G really directs all Connecticut municipalities to aim for a minimum of 10% affordable housing stock. Um, Berlin currently has 9.02%, so it's just short of that goal. And basically what that means is that a developer can come into your community and, uh, potentially bypass your local land use controls, your zoning regulations, by appealing to the courts, uh, to build an affordable housing development. Uh, meaning you as a community don't have control over the size of that development, the density, location, et cetera. Being above 10% makes you immune to that type of application. Uh, so there, there are advantages to being above 10% in addition to providing a much-needed affordable housing for your residents. There are, um, a few different types of affordable housing in the planning world. We talk about capital A affordable and lowercase a affordable. And when we talk about capital A affordable, we are talking about housing that is qualified as affordable housing and counts towards that 10% uh, goal. And that is limited by the state to deed-restricted units, uh, government-assisted units, tenant rental assistance programs such as that, uh, section eight vouchers and wrap vouchers, and mortgage-based, uh, programs such as, uh, CHFA mortgages. So there's, uh, only specific types of, of affordable housing properties that can contribute to that 10%. Um, when we take a look at, at your units as a whole, as I mentioned, it's 9%. Uh, that's a little more than 700 total units, with most of those coming in the form of government-assisted housing units. Uh, Berlin is one of 138 non-exempt communities. And of the rest of the communities on that list, only Brooklyn, uh, Hamden and Weathersfield have a higher percentage of affordable housing. So you're, you're just about there, which, um, uh, you know, I think it, it should be a further incentive to, to do what needs to be done to reach the 10% mark, um, to both provide affordable housing and, um, and, and make yourself immune to applications that would bypass your, your local zoning controls. Uh, Connecticut's or Berlin has made incredible progress over the past two decades, uh, going from 3% affordable housing stock in 2002 to, uh, just over 9% in 2017, 2018. Uh, however, you've been kind of stuck at around 9% since that time. And when we take a look at where most of that housing, uh, is located in town and other types of higher density and affordable housing, apartment housing, it's mostly concentrated in the northern and eastern parts of town. Now, when we talk about affordable housing, there is, what I just reviewed, the housing that qualifies as affordable. However, there is also, uh, uh, housing that is affordable to people in your community. And that is a little more loosely defined. It's a broader spectrum of housing. And that is basically housing that is affordable, uh, to households who earn 80% or less of the area median income, um, with no more than 30% of that income going towards housing costs. And when we take a look at Berlin specifically, and in this case owner households, what we see is that about 17% of your ownership households uh, earn less than 50% of area median incomes. So this is, uh, almost 1,150 households that earn less than 50% of area median income. And those households with an FHA loan or a CHFA loan really can only afford a home that is valued at or priced at $140,000 or less. In this case, 1, 139,577. And with a conventional loan, it's, it's a little higher because the terms are, are different and the deposit requirements are different. But the, these are, these as, as, as you could tell, as you could see, um, these are price points that are not readily available within your community. Yet you have, uh, a, a strong share of your community at 17 or so percent. Uh, that being all they can afford. And, and when we take a look at the renter households in the same situation, 50% area median income or less, what we see is even much higher, of course, because those folks can't even afford to buy a home. And, and what, what you have is about 45% of your renter households are making 50% of let or less of area median income. That's $40,000 a year or less. Um, and they can only afford a rent that is about $1,000 a month or less. So the affordable housing plan seeks to address the need of those households, renter and owner that are currently within your community. And also the desire of the town to add qualified affordable housing units to bring, uh, your total up to 10% or higher. And the way we do that is we've, we've identified, uh, four strategies to assist us in doing so. And I'll walk you through those one by one. Strategy one is to provide additional affordable homeownership opportunities. And we have a number of actions that we, we've identified. They're all called out in the plan and listed here. I won't read them all. But, uh, we have a, a lot of ideas as to how the town can do that and very specific actions that we've identified. In, in addition, in, in the plan, you'll know, we called out, uh, you know, timeframe, uh, priority level, and, uh, we identified the offices, departments that would, uh, be most responsible for furthering, uh, these, these strategies. Strategy two would be to provide more affordable housing for seniors. Uh, Berlin, like most communities across Connecticut, is an aging community. We have baby boomers that are retirement age, uh, and, and elderly in need, uh, wanting to stay in the community, but in need of housing that is more affordable to them. Uh, so by being able to provide them more housing options, uh, they allows them to stay in their community, to afford to stay in Berlin, and at the same time can potentially give them an option to downsize or sell a home that they currently live in, move into something more affordable and appropriate for their needs and free up a home for a family, uh, to buy in town. Strategy three is to refine existing zoning regulations to better support affordable housing. Uh, there are a number of adjustments that can be made to the zoning regulations, uh, some of which the town's already done, particularly with respect to Kensington Village and the TOD efforts in that area. But there is much more that could be done to accommodate housing that is affordable and qualifies as affordable in, in Berlin. And strategy four is to maintain a focus on expanding the, the affordable housing supply. Uh, so to ensure that within town policy and, and departmental operations that, uh, adding to your affordable housing supply is front and center. And we have a number of s- specific actions identified for that. I, and, and I, as, as I said, a number, we've got two slides worth here. And, and as you could see in the report, there's a lot of detail to this effect. And, and that concludes our presentation. Yeah, happy to address, uh, any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Appreciate the, uh, presentation. Uh, this is still our, um, public comments section now after the presentation. So anyone in the public, uh, on Zoom or here has any questions or comments, now would be the time. Not hearing none. We'll go ahead and close the, uh, all the comments. And now we have council comments. Uh, I'll just start off by saying that Berlin, uh, as you heard, um, you know, we've really been, worked on this over the last 20-year period in town to have more affordable housing in Berlin. We, we are, we're at 9.02%. There's only a couple of towns ahead of us, as you heard, and we're still working on it. It's a conscious plan. We have, um, some units under construction, Deving Ridge and, and Britain Avenue there behind Home Depot. They're going to be, uh, affordable. We have some other developments going on in Berlin Turnpike as well that will have portable units, so which will, uh, raise our percentage up. And, you know, with this plan, of course, we will continue to work on affordable housing in Berlin. You know, like I said, it's been a 20-year effort and, um, you know, so we, we're doing good. We can do better. And we're working on that. We're also working on, obviously, senior housing. We're working on that as well. Senior housing, as you might know, we, you know, we're going to report tonight from Mr. Wijorski, but a lot of roadblocks from the state on senior housing, getting financing for it is very difficult. So, uh, we've been working on that for a while as well, the end unit, so. Council members, what else do we have? Anything else?
Um, a quick comment, just based on the review of the affordable housing plan. Um, echoing your, your comments of Mayor Mark, I'm, I'm really encouraged reading through this plan to see a plan that's mindful of both the needs of young people. Obviously, being a young person from Berlin, wanting to build a life in Berlin, it's very important to me that these housing opportunities for young people are present here in this town for people who do want to come here and build a life. Um, by the same token, um, as we discussed many times over, our, um, our senior population is constantly growing. It is a very significant percentage of our townwide population. And that, uh, those, that diversity of housing options needs to be available for, through those seniors who are retired and only receiving social security benefits or just want to downsize. So I was really encouraged to see just the overall scope of the plan, have those two interests in terms of housing really at the forefront. So, uh, you know, props to the affordable housing committee. I know it was a lot of work that went into this plan and, and economic development for their input and, and our, uh, town attorney, uh, attorney copilot as well for all of her work on the process. And so I'm, I'm just really pleased. Um, one, one quick question for Mr. Gomes, if that's okay. Um, I was surprised to see, um, that there was a, a very low um, uh, quantity of deed-restricted units or, uh, homes for purchase in Berlin. And, and I was really pleased to see, um, increasing the number of deed-restricted homes in Berlin as a priority for the plan. So, um, would you mind just giving a little bit of insight into the, um, I'm looking at strategy one, bullet three, evaluate zoning strategies that would facilitate the creation of deed-restricted affordable homes, specifically what the review of the, um, N H D zoning process would look like and how that would be implemented?
Now, let, let me go to that slide, but first let me, uh, clarify something regarding deed-restricted homes. The, the count of deed-restricted-only homes is, is very low. However, a deed restriction, uh, is also a component of other types of affordable housing. And, and so there are actually more than the, uh, specific numbers of deed-restricted homes. Uh, there are more than our, our, were identified, uh, in that inventory. Okay? Uh, but let, let me go, uh, to, to the slide, uh, with respect to the question. Um, and I believe it was on strategy three, correct?
Uh, strategy one, I believe.
Oh, strategy one, right, right.
Just, just a discussion about the N H D zoning evaluation and, and how, um, E N Z might look into that and revise the requirements that are in place.
All right, um, so this, uh, this action to evaluate zoning strategies, uh, to facilitate the creation of deed-restricted affordable homes. Uh, we, we identified the neighborhood affordable housing development zoning regulations, uh, to encourage the use of this tool. This is an, uh, an existing, uh, housing, uh, development, uh, regulation or district. So it's not the creation of a new one. Um, I, I would have to defer to Jim to weigh in on the specifics of this district. I'm not personally, uh, familiar with, uh, how this district functions. Um, but, uh, the idea is to Um, but uh, the idea is to, within the existing regulations, to make amendments as needed. Uh, to uh, encourage or facilitate the creation of deed restricted homes. Um, there are now, as to how we do that, that that's the work that needs to be done to figure out, which is why we say. Evaluate zoning strategies. And uh, by example, in some communities, which isn't to say this is how you'd go about it in Berlin. Uh, but in Stanford, by example, a much different community, Stanford has a below market rate program. Um, it it's a program that we're currently working with the city of Danbury to. To recommend as part of their affordable housing work. And that program basically requires a certain amount of development. Uh, percentage of development within any new development over a certain size. To be uh, affordable, deed restricted affordable, so that that's one example. Of how you might uh, revise zoning regulations to produce uh, deed restricted affordable housing. And and Jim, I'm not sure if there's anything else you'd like to add to that.
Uh, I think it's, you know, this is just, it it just to study it, to to evaluate whether there's other strategies, we have a limited number of these. So, you know, and Maureen might wanna weigh in, but, you know, are there ways, and you know, obviously, we've had some develop uh. Dialogue with developers in this process. But, you know, single family housing developer, the dialogue was limited, so. You know, we'll, that'll be part of the study to evaluate whether there's possibilities to improve it.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gomes. Any other council members have a question? Okay, uh, thank you as well, um. Thank you for the presentation, so then uh, close the public hearing at this time. And uh, we will now move on to uh. New business.
So the first item on the agenda, you pull up the Affordable Housing Plan, we transfer those, then we get off the sub policy and management.
So. Go ahead and uh, we discussed it, we've had a public hearing on it, this is the plan that uh, Berlin. Uh, if we accept this motion and vote on it, we'll we'll adopt and send it to the state, and again, we will continue. Uh, working on affordable housing, it's. Very difficult, as you know, in Connecticut, and. Keeps going up, and uh, so we're we're doing the best we can, and we're doing much better than most towns. Any more affordable housing units, uh. On all end of the spectrum, so. Any other comments from the council, but now we're gonna take a motion on this. And move to the adopted Affordable Housing Plan, we'll catch here too, and direct the county manager to convey the plan. Second on it?
Second that.
Thank you, uh, go there. There's some other comments or questions from the council? And go on the motion, all in favor?
Hi.
Close, alright, motion, uh, motion carries. Thank you.
Item number two is an update from housing authority.
Proper timing, Wijorski, perfect time.
Okay, so. We went to report that um, last year we. Most of the services of Northeast Road, the redevelopment services, and uh, we're also doing businesses, Greater Brighton Realty, I'll see. As our developer on this project, so through their efforts, they've been able to secure a thirty four million dollar construction. Uh, from Caltech Trading America. Um, it basically has a two year payback once the funds are drawn. We anticipate a year, you know, prior to the funds being drawn to work out, I don't remember, it's like that, um. There's a whole list of um, items that we need to work with, uh, the county manager, town, kind of facilitate, um. Meeting the terms of the action agreement, but we're having discussions on that now, um, this too, like. Uh, substantiates financial support, things like that, so uh. It's a lot of dining, nice crossing the teams, we're in the process of doing that now, like I said. And uh, hopefully we'll have this project running shortly.
That's great news. Obviously, a little work to do, but yeah, it's great, it's been a long time coming and uh. Just been a very difficult road for a lot of reasons, a lot of roadblocks.
It's been a long slug, you know, state has some rules pertaining to housing authorities, and the way they raise funds and. You know, X credit makes us jump through a lot, so.
Right, well, appreciate all the hard work on it, questions for Joe?
When you. Uh, we're approved for fifty, we're gonna be discussing going to fifty two, um, as part of our discussions with respect to the action. Um, we were able to get some funding through energy, um. Like a better term, the green energy type stuff, um, we're going to a geothermal process. We both are heating or ventilation, or um, air conditioning, hot water. So um, they'll require us to. And allow us to utilize more equipment. Space that we would have had it well set aside for H V C. Allow us to basically increase, so possibly by two units, you know, for the whole project, so. Convoluted process, but um, has some potential to save us a lot of money down the road.
Right? Right, and a couple units, that's good. Okay, any questions for? Joe? Okay, uh, appreciate the update.
And um, I'll probably be back here, we'll probably have to extend the option, um, just statistically. Accomplished, um.
Joe, I'm sorry, would you mind speaking into the mic a little bit better, we're, I don't know if it's just me, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Can hear me? Can hear him now, done?
Yeah, I can now, I can hear you, but I was dropping off, I don't know if he's got a mic issue or what, thank you.
Alright, no problem. Alright, so good, uh, alright, so you'll be back in front of us soon, shortly, alright?
Yep.
Well, glad we're making some progress.
Alright, very good, thank you, thank you.
Uh, good job. Number three, now the number three, so if you recall, the council wanted us, uh, to the public works. To uh, get some pricing for the contingent volunteer fire department parking lot. Uh, like the owner worked on that, and he has some numbers for you, but I will let him discuss the uh. Different uh, strategies that he has outlined here.
Thank you.
Mike? Yes, can you guys hear me?
I hear you.
Awesome, okay, um, but I'd just like to go back to last year when um, just to, just gives everyone a little uh, little memory, uh. Uh, just a little recall on this, uh, the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department approached the town. We were brought in because they were looking for help on their parking lot. The previous quotes, they had three previous quotes um, that they supplied to um, to us through Donna. And it was arranged from a hun- hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to one hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Now that included expanding the parking lot behind Mattson's. And that, uh, after we went and took a look at it, and Jim Horrible and a few other people talked to um, the chief. We realized that there'd be permitting issues, so that was taken out of the mix. The quotes that you have right now are through our our contractor who's working under the state bid. That's just to repave or reconstruct the existing parking lot, it does not include expanding. It was like a ten thousand square foot um, area behind Mattson, so just so I just wanna make that clear. So the three options that um, Galasso, um, who was our contractor for the season, laid out. Range from fifty, and give you round numbers, fifty three thousand dollars for basically a two and a half inch. Um, pavement section, they would mill an overlay, two inches that before they um, actually put the the overlay on there. They would do a leveling course of a half inch, fill in the low spots, that kind of thing. That is the cheapest, and um, we personally think that that's not the right approach for this parking lot. Because the the pavement has basically failed, the sub grade hasn't. Um, the other two options, one is about seventy five thousand and one is about, um, say eighty thousand, are. Uh, the second one is a a pavement depth of four inches, that means take everything up, you bring in a hundred tons of process aggregate, you regrade the lot. And then you put in um, two inches of binder and then two inches of a surface course. Um, the the third option, which is around eighty thousand, is a four, four and a quarter inch um, approach. Which has a three inch binder, you know, ag- again, take all the pavement out, bring in a hundred tons of ag- aggregate, regrade the lot. Because it needs to be regraded to make sure the drainage works, because it's pretty much all surface drainage, drainage. Um, so that would be a three inch binder with a one and a half, a quarter inch surface overlay. Galasso recommended putting in a coarser binder, because it will actually uh, resist. The point loads at the fire trucks, because they're pretty tru- they're pretty heavy. Um, so that's basically how it lays out. And as noted in the uh, agenda item, our paving funds are through the state and the debt, the town bonding that's in place. So we either have to go get special permission from the state to pull funds from that, I do not think the bonding. Um, the way the ordinance was written would allow this to be used on another uh, property owner's, um, you know, project. And this property is not owned by the town, it's owned by the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department. So that's um, that's where the numbers are, one additional note, there's an asphalt escalation factor. So any number here, you probably just add, you know, seven thousand dollars to that, and then and then I would add a contingency to. In case of there's unknowns, or if the asphalt goes up even further by the time this happens, if it does happen. So that's, that's sort of the uh, the options that were laid out in the history.
Okay, thank you, Mike, sure.
I I have a question, if I if I can, um. What the aggregate, what size of that, the the last item that we're looking at for in a quarter inches? Do we know what size aggregate would be using with that?
Yes, it is. It's a class four binder. I think it's an inch and a, inch and a half, and it's an inch and a half grind, uh, bind, uh, aggregate in there. Um, which is more, it's a coarser aggregate than like the class two or class one. Which is typically what we use on our roads, and he has used this, uh, the representative from Bellasso had used this on six fire, firehouse lots that he did. And he said, it worked well, because a lot of times the fire trucks are sitting outside, and they're actually, um, you know, on the, on the actual uh, parking lot. Not just driving over it, they're actually sitting there getting washed or, you know, getting maintained. So he said they're actually, they would treat this a little different than our roads, actually.
Okay, thank you, that's that, that's what I wanna hear, thanks, Mike.
Okay. Any questions? Weren't we supposed to get state money for this?
Uh, uh, are you asking me?
Either one, anybody?
Yeah, no, no, this, this, okay, I'll let Donna in.
No, this, this is not anything that we've been uh, trying to get from the state. Uh, this was a conversation that started several years ago with Mr. Assimowitz, and just never came to fruition.
I'm not familiar with that.
Well. We've got a slew of emails that can, you know.
Yes, yeah, come on up, Chief, yeah, absolutely. You were next on my list anyway, to bring that, so perfect, perfect timing.
Uh, Chief, uh, Jeff Pager, uh, Kensington, uh, a little bit of history, this started, um. For 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 those folks not familiar, it started about twenty eighteen-ish, I I believe, if my memory serves, twenty eighteen, maybe late twenty eighteen. And I had approached uh, Joe at the time, George Assimowitz, um, who, uh. You know, was was fairly hopeful that we could pull in state money for this, not being a humongous project in the. In the grand scheme of state projects. We worked um, really for three or four years back and forth, so there was emails with his, uh, I don't wanna say handlers. I'm not sure, his people, you know, um, we went through financials and things like that about the firehouse and. Went back and forth, oh, it might get on the, might get on the bonding thing, and this and that, and it just, it never gained enough steam. To 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 come to fruition. And and going back in the the history of of the parking lot, actually, Joe, Joe may actually know, but the 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 lot, we think was paved probably sometime. I mean, we're going back into the seventies, eighties, this thing is old, Joe, Charlie's been out there with us, it's it's really in bad shape. Um, and, you you know, bake sales, uh, unfortunately, just don't go very far these days, um. To to get this, to get this over with, finish time, so. When when Donna came in, I approached her as successor to that position, saying, yeah, I had worked with Joe, here's all. Literally emails back and forth for years, you know, what can we do? And at that time, the the original question was, could could this be done at the state level? Um, you know, and it sounded like that was just not, not necessarily feasible, um. I don't understand all of those, those types of politics, so, um, but that that's, that's kind of where we are. We are, we are at a point where my, you know, likely that driveway, I think, Charles, you may know even better, you're you're more of an construction guy than I am. You know, we're we're gonna have some failures in that, right, we have vehicles that weigh eighty eight thousand pounds, um, that are fifty two feet long. Um, and and it's, it's just not gonna. Might as well just close the shop on it. I I just, I'm so, I'm I'm out of, you know, my frustration is just that I'm just out of options, because we're. Been a very long process.
Well, I'm sorry, I gotta go through all this, um, but um, you're a fire department, so uh. It's al- always Berlin will take care of its own, I'm sure.
I I I appreciate it, I understand the logistics of, you know, we own the the property, the building, and things like that, I get that, but but yeah, so.
Yeah, when the fire bell goes off here, there, so, we're there for you.
I get it, I appreciate it, we absolutely appreciate it, so.
We're gonna do this, so my suggestion might be, if we all agree, uh, to pave this parking lot for the fire department. I hope someone doesn't agree, but if you do, that would be your time to object, if not, we'll go forward. I wonder if they just, just send us to the board of finance, just don't look at it, maybe they can. Come up with some, you know, we'll we'll come up with the funding, Chief, um, you know, I know we have the end of the budget you're coming to, so there. You know, maybe some surplus funds, but I'd rather that the board of finance look at it and and work maybe with Kevin and yourself and. What do you think?
I mean, you're planning to, uh, bring to you. Proposal. For the amount of capital that you moved from the budget?
Yes.
On the project itself.
Right, right.
So perhaps this can be part of that conversation.
Yeah.
I would certainly ask, what I finance, we got this signed off on, the one forty three million dollar capital. Um, be funded with the surplus, so if we change this to that, we'll have to ask them to look at it.
Yeah.
I will ask, we can take it, whatever it is.
That's good, yeah, thank you, Charles.
When you do talk to the board of finance, I strongly heard, uh, option three, it's a much better design. Eighty thousand dollars, and like to then include curving too, you said.
Yes, it does.
I I think that's a good value.
Clearly, just like where option three is eighty thousand, what? So, we'll we'll get a roll in Chief, we'll get your parking lot paved this year.
I appreciate it, I just wanted to extend my um, appreciation for for Charlie for coming out a couple times, Donna and and Mike working on this. It's been a, kind of a big, big group effort, so, thank you.
Thank you for keeping us safe, thank you, thank you, everybody, thanks, Mike, make Charlie, thank you.
As a matter of fact, for that too, because we're concerned about every fire department, obviously, and yes, there are some issues that we have over at South Kensington Building.
Yes.
Another issue, is there a way that we can take a look at the numbers, have there been anything as far as looking at the roof, I know there's an issue with it.
Yeah, we're doing the roof, right?
Doing roof this year, okay, great.
Yeah, right, that's. Yeah, definitely one, right.
Right, the old school.
I'm told.
I didn't call them.
Just for the record, Chief, uh, my dad was chief there for ten years, so, very familiar with that.
Seventies, it's time for a new paving job, I can, yeah, it's probably about time, right? We don't like to change much in Berlin, but we'll pave that over, we're gonna fix that one. Yeah, yeah, that's for sure, uh, okay, great, well, yeah, we'll get that going.
Item number four, Mr. Wijorski, yes, please do some of the uh, agenda committees, yes.
Yes, so, we got the report presented to us, uh. Last time, and what what I really wanted to do tonight is, uh, I mean, we could have some discussion now, or we could. Wait, we, you know, we, obviously, there's a lot to look at, I wanted to try and get a date for the uh, public um. Meeting, so we can get this out to the to the public. Uh, the date I'm thinking of is June second, the Thursday, that would be at McGee at seven. Um, and uh, make a presentation of the report. Uh, and it's, uh, I think we're looking at that same.
Uh, and it's, uh, I think we're looking at that same day, if we could do it, uh, maybe one o'clock at the senior center, we're gonna do the two. Meetings, seven at McGee and wanna, um, I'm pretty sure the community center, that's definitely the, the second at McGee. I just wanna make sure some other people could make it to the one, at one, one P M. If not, pick another day for the seniors, but that's what I'm thinking, get that out to the public, what I, what I like to do, Roche is, um, before then, um. Maybe the next week, get some, uh, I know we tried to publicize it on the website, Facebook page, and it's, you know, been out there, but. Get some printed copies, maybe left at the senior center, printed copies at the community center, printed copies at the library, and obviously some printed copies here at, at town hall. And we'll, uh, uh, hopefully get, maybe we'll, we'll get something, uh. Like a press release, maybe out to the citizen, uh, the next week or so. And just announce that public meeting, so we, because, you know, before we all start discussing it, I think it's important we get it out to the, to the public. And then we could get their comments back in, you know, after, after we make that, uh, presentation. That make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I, I don't see how this could be a decision we make without community.
Now, of course.
Um, it's, it's a huge project, that's, obviously, it's a big need. Our community, um, that we've had for a really long time, as I've been around, maybe it's about one. In all seriousness, um, I, I, I do think that the two meetings sounds like a great idea, I think, considering it's. The senior center is, you know, it's a, it's a senior community center, it makes sense to have a, a public hearing at the senior center as well, to make sure that those. Who have a serious stake in it, um, have a chance to be a part of the process too, so. Um, I will do my part to get the word out and to all the sides of, to the citizen or, um, social media channels that, um. And we obviously want these to be really well attended meetings, and you know that the special committee put a ton of work into it. So, uh, it's important, it's important that public input on, on a project of this significance, so.
Yeah, I want to make sure that the, um, you know, all the facts get out there, right? Not just, you know, people, unfortunately, again. As mentioned earlier, social media cuts both ways, um, you know, it's a great way to get information out there, but. If you read a lot of social, many of the social media comments of different projects in town over the past few years that I've been in there, you know. Half the information's out there, incorrect information's out there, of course, and people get, um, you know, uh, upset or riled up or. Incorrect or, you know, part of the information, so the goal would be to get as much of the whole, the whole report out there and, and get, get the residents and to. Give us their comments, you know, as we heard tonight about our, our unleashed area, we want to hear that. And more on, on this very large project, so, so the second should work good, if we're good.
Oh, good.
And I think we're good at the senior center, I just want to make sure, I think it should be good for that day.
Are you all comfortable about it because of, of the citizens getting in it?
Yeah. They're good?
I, I want to conduct the meeting, who, who is it gonna be a presenter?
Probably myself and, uh, and the chair, chair there, Brendan?
Brendan?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and just put that, probably, I think there's some, right? Right, right, out of that, like, that you guys started.
Donna put together.
Right? Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll use that, we'll work on that, clean that up a little, uh, I mean, I haven't seen any of it, but I know Brendan has it. So we'll get that out. At the meeting.
Just want to check, is McGee available?
Let's check that first, that's probably a good idea. But then on top of the list, the Roche. Yeah, cause I want to get that, that, at least that, and, and I'm not saying that's the last meeting, but I want to get one out before, you know, what happens, we get to the summer and people aren't around, so we don't want to. We want to get at least something out there quick, as quickly as possible, all right?
Sixteen minutes.
All right, we're good, okay, so.
Tonight on number five.
Yes.
It's been available for Vermont Systems, that's by Park and, right? Jen, you're available.
I am here, you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, um, so Vermont Systems is the company that we utilize, uh, for our recreation management software. It holds all our data for regist, program registrations, facility rentals, field rentals. Um, anything that's done through the park and rock office is basically, uh, into this database. We've used it for over twenty years, a couple of years ago, business con, as part of the business continuity plan. We switched this, instead of backing up everything on the servers, we're now switching it over to the iCloud, which. Costs a couple more thousand dollars each year, which puts us over the ten thousand dollar threshold, which is why we're coming to you in the best interest of the town, to allow us to continue to use this software. Backing it up to the iCloud, which is better than having it backed up to our servers, anyway.
All right, thanks, Jen. Comments, questions? All right, hearing none, we're gonna take a motion.
Move the way of the town, really procedures throughout the parks and recreations department, to continue to use lots of recreation management software. Amount has to be thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and ten cents.
You have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Second, thank you, uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Hi.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six is a big deal of the Dunning Sand and gravel, use of the Timbaland off course, Mr. Salyer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members Day Council.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Just peachy. You know, you guys know. Roche, they don't pay you nearly enough, I'll tell you that, hey, you know?
Yeah.
They did, I didn't get it.
I haven't seen my, I haven't seen my check for the last few years, what did I think of?
Anyhow, um, I'm looking, uh, to obtain a bid waiver for Dunning Sand and Gravel Farmington. Um, for golf course, uh, we will exceed the ten thousand dollar threshold. I should have probably prefaced my remarks by saying to councilor Payanesso, the answer to your question is yes. As pertains to his question, that's all, that last council meeting, which said, you know, we need to revisit this ten thousand dollar threshold. And, and yes, we do, uh, I would appreciate it, I'm sure other managers would appreciate it as well. Um, but with that being said.
Appreciate it too, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people would appreciate it, but anyhow, so, uh, Dunning, essentially at this point, it becomes a sole source provided to the golf course. They provide to us our bunker sand, our top dressing sand, our soil, subsoil, topsoil, stream topsoil, uh, give it mix. Uh, all of the, uh, the necessities for day-to-day operation. When I looked at other vendors, which are located much further away than Farmington. The cost of the trucking are exceeded the cost of the material. And used to, a couple of years ago, we've been using Dunning now for about five, six years, we used to pay a, a fee of a hundred dollars for. Trucking, like three hundred dollars for Farmington round trip. Now it's a hundred and fifty plus a fuel surcharge on top of that twenty-five dollars. So it's not to one seventy-five, the, the cost of the product is run up a little bit, but not substantial. So, uh, all their material is, um, USGA approved, uh, it matches up well with our soil profile and our greens, uh, and our bunkers as well. So I would recommend strongly that we continue to, um, to use them as a vendor. But unfortunately, maybe we're a little overzealous this year, of course, we've taken out a number of projects. That we need to button up, and we are going to exceed that ten thousand dollar mark. There's plenty of money in our materials account, it's just that we're going over with this one. So we're looking for that, uh, in a amount not to exceed eighteen thousand.
Thank you, Sharon. Uh, questions, Karen? Well, say, while you're here, just one quick question, how, how was the, I don't want to touch on the spot, but I will. Uh, how, how is the, uh, how's the golf course going these days? I mean, I know we, you know, talked about that, um, company, pub in, and we kind of, yeah, held off on that, but. How, how is the course and how, how, how do you think we're doing out there?
Well, the golf course is doing well.
Yeah.
I believe this year, we achieved a record number of season's pass sales, we've never done this much, we're about. Thirty thousand dollars over last year's season's pass sales, and that was a good year, so we've eclipsed that plus thirty, and we're still selling them. Greens fees are currently, I'm talking March to today, uh, we're probably awash as far as greens fees are concerned. Uh, car revenue, again, March to, to today, will probably flat as well compared to last year, and again, we did very well last year. Uh, the fiscal year, so, with all that being said, with the season's pass sales being up, our greens fees, you know, on a par with last year, our car revenue. It's a little bit off, but we attribute that, if you look at the fiscal year, uh, we had a very wet July and August last year. So now we're seeing repercussions of that in our, in our numbers. So you really can't make that up, but we're looking again at the spring, and we're on a par with last spring, at least these first three or four months, so. The course is doing well.
And how?
You know, fiscally speaking, the course is doing well.
Maintenance wise, what are we thinking of the, the course as a whole with maintenance?
You know, we've taken out a lot of projects, we've taken down a lot of trees, um, for a number of reasons, maybe cultural, safety, uh, aesthetics. And we're implementing other, um. Things, I don't want to get into any great detail, we're, we're, we're looking to save labor as well as, this time is money.
Yeah.
And calculus, which are money, calculus are very expensive. So by doing certain things, we're looking to establish forward teams, uh, to help with beginners, or should I have talked about this? Um, change the complexion of the course, open it up to a more diverse room. So, I don't, you know, short answer is doing well. The course is doing well, could it be better? Yes, the weather really, I was talking to Donna earlier, you know, it really has been conducive to. Throwing grass this spring, and that applies to everybody, a lot of golf courses is staying quite a bit of, um, winter damage to their greens. You know, we were no exception, but they're all coming out pretty well. Um, so, you know, fingers crossed, and weather permitting and weather cooperating, we should have another good year, yes.
Okay, great, yeah. Yes.
You asked a question.
Yes.
I would like to bring, uh, recommendations to the ordinance committee. Perhaps to council, whatever is appropriate. We are beginning to generate surplus consistently at Timbaland. Last year, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, this year, we'll get to another six figures most likely. What I would like to do is to come up with a proposal, perhaps on a three-year rolling average.
Yeah.
Take that surplus, invest it back to Timbaland, uh, it's badly needed. We've, Doug and his crew have done a great job this year painting and trying to boost it up a little bit. Steve Wood has done a remarkable job with the, uh, plantings. But there's a minute amount of, um, capital need that you need to address. And I would rather do it from the surplus and try to come back and ask the taxpayers to pay for it. Be more entities like that that can pay for itself, and yeah, thanks to Jerry and the team and. Mark Behram and everybody else is doing a great job there, so, we're just the commission all pulling together. I think if we can, we can solve the problem within the, 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 Timbaland itself, I think that'll be fantastic.
Good. About how much you think it's surplus? That's great.
Um, I would think it, it'll get close to a hundred, right?
I was hoping for one thirty, but I would say we'll be in six figures. It's hurting, this year, we were at one sixty-five.
Yeah.
So, again, fingers crossed, you know, if we, that's one twenty, if we have. Or six figures, you know, somewhere a hundred thousand dollars. It's all good.
Good? Well, better than the days, it'll deficit, so.
Thanks for Roche.
Thanks. All right, so we have a motion, we're, we're gonna make a motion. It's, uh.
This is the way, um, waiting for you, for Dunning, Sandy, Gravel, white topsoil, required for the. Report nine eleven seventeen, staying inspired for day-to-day operations, amount not to be two thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any other comments, your questions? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you, Jared. Did I get number seven, uh, for your proposal, or, uh, on, on lay?
In this, Mayor Council.
All right.
Yeah, this, uh, this project, uh, the complex physical services, but on the, uh, agenda for a few years, um, the qualified projects, we decided to. On the basis of the funding at this time, specifically when we designed the project, but after. We're kind of waiting to see the outcome of, uh, recycling center, wash bay, we have the flood, as you know, on the complex last fall. So we wanted to kind of get through a few of those open items, kind of see where things fell, before we have any further investment, but it seems to me at this point in time, we're gonna. Stay where we are, with the improvements necessary, so. Based on unit costs, what will happen right now with. People are materials, they'll, they'll, what we, who we spoke with, seems like the best approach to realize. Hopefully not too many surprises, unit costs are up, it's all in the budget, we do have some contingency, and it's under, we work with the past, a very. Try not to impact services down in the context too much, too long, so. It's a pretty costly, things are what we quoted out. This approach, get that off the list, uh, further work, wash basin, this traditional funding, and also, you know.
Questions for that? Done, thank you, Roche, have a good time. All right, we're gonna take a motion.
Move be utilized, state of Connecticut, on call, roofing contract, J C L M, one eight R. E G zero zero four one, you approve the proposals from Lockshaw, Instruction Corporation of Manhattan, Connecticut. An amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and five dollars, which includes a thirty percent project contingency. The roofing of number fifteen, thirty-five, twenty-nine, town apartment.
Second that.
You, uh, there are no other comments or questions, but if you vote on the motion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Uh, generator number eight. Who would just replace, but, Sage Bar, the lease bill, as you recall, to get the money from two big projects. This is, uh, almost because. Uh, it's kind of, you may, this, this project is reasonable, all of them, and that would be a little. Of course, uh, all of them work.
Yes, as Roche mentioned, um, former speaker, uh, we're going to state, um, you were fortunate to receive this grant for two of those substantial projects. The improvement of the sage, along with the field replacement of the high school. Um, the way the grant language is written, it's very specific to the requirements of the scoreboard and what we can do to replace that. So luckily, one of the big manufacturers is on contract. The local representatives from New England, it's in Massachusetts, uh, they've come up with a design meets criteria. That's been reviewed with the Board of Education, Athletics, and they work, park and rec, raw field users to use this. Planning and zoning, had an opportunity to peek at it, for any changes or requirements, as, as we do the upgrade. The project's also very involved, bringing fiber into the facility, so for future expansion, camera security, automation, irrigation, lighting. So, looking forward to getting this component done with the fiber, and it really enhances the facility for the town users of that facility down the road. On the scoreboard will be a great touch on, not quite at a collegiate international, you know, field level, but certainly it'll enhance, complement the, the new turf field that we have. The work that's been done, teachers, or the high school teacher, concessioner creates, future parking lot, future field upgrade, so. Great, great component for the work, the project, um, certainly athletics are very excited.
Thank you, that's, uh, that's one expensive scoreboard. Thank goodness the state's paying for it. Um, which is still our tax dollars, um, but, uh, question, on the score of the, the, the field. Turf the field, the month, you know, the, there was another one million dollars in that grant or something.
Yeah, the, um, we'll call it lump sum grant.
Yeah.
Um, nine and a half or something, two points, so.
Okay.
Roughly.
So, how's that going? I've got the scoreboard, I see, where's the, how about the field?
Jen and Steve Wood, they're going through the process, they'll have a, a race.
Okay, good, and then wasn't part of that for the, the upgrade, the, uh, bathroom facilities and, uh, sage?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
Public restrooms were upgraded last year.
Okay, that's right. We did that, right? Okay, good. But softball, that's right, yeah, we did that. Okay, good. No, no, that's good.
Softballing was upgraded.
Yeah.
Sorry, the softball field was.
The field, we did that, yeah. And, 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 uh, that was the facility.
These are the two major, first two phases of the grant and vision of what we can do in the future, should there be any butt over money. Uh, we can reallocate that with additional approvals, expand on lighting upgrades.
Off stage park.
Softballs have done.
How did this project come about? I just wondered if we decided we needed one of the million dollars for work. We're against the children.
Yeah, it is interactive, so there's some curriculum components to it. Better public viewing. Technology certainly expanded.
Whose idea was it? Did this come from Public Building Commission or our department? But this idea?
I think it was, I'd have to look back on previous history, but I believe it was, you know, the athletics, this board of education.
I'm just passing the board of everything. We need a quarter million dollars for work. Beyond my apprehension, sorry.
Yeah, I think once, once the design criteria was put into the system and what, what came back. The numbers were a lot higher than just. But the, the good news is this, this manufacturer and their, their rep, um, they've held the pricing for just about two years. Um, working with the manufacturer to try to not pass along any increases to the town. Also, they're very, very supportive of the project. They want to see this, see this go through and.
Can you make a quarter million dollars? I'll be with the board. I was the one construction project. Doug, it's just, I have a question in terms of use is do use going to be governed by the board of education? The reason why I'm asking is because we we've had conversations about, um, public buildings as of late. And I know that there are some towns that use their, um, football field jumbo trons for public viewing. Then a promo does it as an example. I don't know if I'm getting too far ahead of where the project is at right now, but would there be some possibility of additional community use beyond just strictly for the schools?
Yeah, certainly the intent is, is a, is a town facility for the public. Uh, the grant language doesn't encompass that, that we, we can't restrict the use of this field with a deep brand, more than use of the scoreboard. There's a curriculum component within that scoreboard. Uh, more specifically to the school and curriculum, but certainly any field users can utilize that system on the scoreboard can be standalone, the top portion, which is more just numeric. And then certainly the, the video portion can be used or not used, depending on who's using the field. Um, it is a little complex as far as parking wreck, athletics, outside users who choose to rent the field. We're still working through the training portion of that, but basically there's two ways to operate the scoreboard, the, you know, phase one, step one, component one, and then also the video integration. So there's a few ways to operate it. Certainly before we hand over the remote or go live, we're going to make sure that everybody's trained on it.
Probably good idea.
Certainly, Jack, to your point, you know, you having, having movie night someday and probably you can drive and.
Would be the first time we had a movie night on the drive.
Yeah.
I, I just have one.
I'm thinking of where the Disney movie.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interject, but if I can ask one question.
Um, yeah.
The, um, as I'm looking through the paperwork, is this company the only company in the area that does this type of, uh, you know, uh, signage, if you will? I only see one bid here. Was there nobody else that we reached out to? Or is that part of the stipulation?
Yeah, the, the basis for design references is Daktronics, which is one of the major manufacturers. There certainly is a, a few other manufacturers in the industry. Um, they, they are the, we do have a lot of their products currently in town, and they were specified in the grant.
Oh, so they were specified, so there really wasn't an option to use somebody else in that? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Correct, yes.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else? Questions? Big expenditure? Not? We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move utilize Massachusetts Tire Education Consortium. Contract B fourteen and enter into agreement with scoreboard enterprise for community. Massachusetts is a sole source, Daktronic provider for Connecticut. To design and install a Daktronic wide video and display, now associated audio visual components. Together with associated psych work on police field, city park for the month, naturally. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four hours and sixteen back.
Second. All right, thank you. Um, any other comments or questions? I mean, not all is in favor of the motion. Aye.
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 Close. All right, uh, motion carries.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Just item number nine is in the order of contract, other than engineering.
Just want to remind everybody the rationale for doing this, uh, because there's concrete pipe, uh, number nine. Um, the, uh, we went out to bid for professional services. Four bidders a- applied. Um, of the four, we, uh, actually interviewed two. And last, last one we selected, selected was Leonard Engineering because they had actually a D W S R F, a project experience, which was important to us. And we went through that Q B S process with the state required, and, um, it came out satisfactory. Now, we did add additional fifteen percent on here, um, only because we think that there's going to be some, some supply chain issues and, and changes that are maybe required. So it, it boosted up the actual dollar amount.
Okay, thanks, Ray.
Okay.
Any questions for Ray? I don't think I'm motion on this.
Move authorized the comment and the word section of contract. Twenty twenty-two dash zero two, another in the area incorporated. Provide contract and instruction, construction, second service. During installation of fifteen inch water main and one brown front. We're demoing rubber and wood on it. As well as provide assistance in finding the drinking water. Date involving program.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions for Ray?
Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome. Uh, item ten is basically this, uh, the.
Ray, hold on, let me just.
I'm sorry.
Throw it up, let's throw it on this. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close. You're on, Ray, again.
Okay, sorry about that.
I know you went out of here, I get it.
Yeah, it's a little bit different working from here.
Um, recovering.
Item ten is basically, uh, to allow the town manager to sign off on the construction award. We were about, had six or seven bidders, it worked out really well. The lowest bidder, uh, Burns Construction Company. Uh, they seem like a very good company, our, our engineers evaluated them and satisfactory. We also added another twenty percent in here as a contingency because of the supply chain issue. Uh, right now, we're, um, in the midst of having the final agreement with, uh, the state, uh, where I submitted a checklist, uh, the engineer submitted a checklist. And we're still waiting for a deep, uh, approval, which is the, uh, F M C, the Flood Management Certification. Because where you are doing something unique here, we're actually drilling underneath the Mattabasset River. Uh, it requires their approval, and, um, they've been delaying us on this, so hopefully we're going to be getting this approval sometime this week.
Any questions for Ray? Very number, I'll take a motion.
Move authorized the town manager's award in twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, board of main replacement. Burns Construction Company Stratford, Connecticut. Amount of one million, five hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, which includes a forty percent contingency. Depending upon the face health department award or low interest fund.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Don. Um, any other questions or anything for Ray? If not, we'll go ahead and take a, uh, take a vote, all those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Feel better.
Are you headed?
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're not taking that one?
So, uh, I don't know, that was my favorite topic here. Of course, uh, off this area, so. What you do? They're a bit of history. We passed the ordinance in December. And, uh, that ordinance makes all. Some of the disorder, including open space. But we made an exception to the middle of the Vicentino Park for six month period. For those to be off this, that comes to an end on July twenty plus twenty twenty-two. Before then. You should find a baseball, not to run off this. Or there will be a space. Uh, on the school. So the, uh, proposed location, um, you have a map of that. It's the, uh, one that is. We got parking. The initial recommendation was to have a fence in the front and in the back. And not anything on the other side because of natural vegetation. Considering all comments from everyone else, not opt in this to have a fence on the side of the walkway. That could allow people to still use that, uh, path, so to say.
Yeah.
The second option. I'm just going south here. If you go further west, towards Spur Spruce Brook. There's a space, another fair that is uneven to get there. It's there, that is twice as the guest, this area here. So, I'm glad that, I mean, this is the whole purpose of having a public discussion.
Yeah.
For mine and share their views and, um, we, I, I think, you know, you said, uh, that we have over two thousand acres here and there are eighteen families, I know some of it in the middle town. But we should be able to find some space to accommodate, uh, folks who want to go to the knowledge. And also, uh, keep everyone else safe at the same time.
Yeah. I think we want to stay away from a budding middle town. We want to deal with budding owners, rental town, get above it, another town that's, that'll just complicate it more, but. Um, you know, we got a lot of comments tonight, all good comments, all good to hear and all, um, you know, I mean, that, that would be, you know, that's why I was asking the track coach and we could talk to them a little bit response in time. Only may, uh, you know, we left that, I understand that that path is ADA compliant, um, it's a flat path, I guess, there, uh, by the handicapped spots if we, um, which was the plan anyway, like you just said, Rock, we, we had a fence with a little walkway through to get into that area, and we had a fence at the back end as well, signage, but now I'm wondering if we, uh, you know, there's another option. It is to just run a fence along, uh, the path, obviously on the grass side and on the wood side, and that would leave the path open, obviously. And the other side is a huge buffer of woods, which, which, there, I wouldn't think any dog would want to go run through that. And so hence it is, that's wrong, hence its purposes. I don't know what the usage is of the actual fairway, but we can, you know, maybe explore that a little bit more before we make any final decisions and look at maybe some other areas out there too. Um, I, I, I gotta think there's plenty of room there to make it work. I mean, the, the biggest thing I heard was the fence. And we, that's the one that the path was still be open for everyone to walk on, run on, uh, you know, again. And then we still have an open area off leash. If we keep everyone safe, the dogs safe and, uh, people safe. I don't know, maybe, possibility. We can.
Um, Jeff, that's property you picked up, the Chikowski property, that's not part of any of Vicentino Park, right? So it's unlimited. I mean, it's not part of, uh, the Conservation Commission doesn't run it.
Right? I think it does, right, Jim? Right, Jim?
Yes, yeah, we bought that Chikowski property with state funds also, so there is the, uh, the restrictions.
We just clarified with the Chikowski property. Yeah, it's, uh, it's on the, uh, on the Chambro Highway there, it's the first, uh, yeah, but Vice and Pay. Uh, so it's worth married in that, that new spot. With the, yeah, with like the apple or. Yeah. Oh. So, so that's what we're facing. I mean, uh, you know, and I heard everybody and, you know, it's all good comments. We're glad everybody comes out. Um, so we got to look at, look, ma- maybe look at that again, you know, and go see what the fence line would be like there, if we move it up onto the grass a little bit.
Yeah, as a former, as a former cross-country parent.
Yes.
Obviously. I feel much better and, and because of the fact that, you know, like everybody gets like four dogs to get excited and, and see kids running around. I, I say, just so you know, for the fairway usage.
Yes.
That teams usually use that to gather and stretch. So I would say maybe we can, we can. Just a little bit, we can just make sure that the, the far end of the fairway where the, the path turns.
Yeah.
If we keep that area open and encourage all the teams to use that area as a stretching area, gathering area, that would work too. The starting area is a little bit further up from there, like right in the middle of the fairway base.
Okay. So do they stretch it at, at the little area right past the, uh, handicapped spots?
Currently, currently that's, that, that little.
Little mosque, like a little hill.
They usually use that, they, they kind of spread out all the way down, down the, down the path.
Fairway, yeah.
The fairway, then, they're basically where the path is, where they start in the path is where both several tables scoring open. And that's where they get.
So if you move the fence into the grass, there are a little way it should have. And then, and if you move that initial fence just a little bit past the mound, they still have the mound.
Yes. And I even think that, you know, obviously that are farther areas too.
Yeah.
You know, if we cut the fencing in.
Which is. Yeah, and I think just looking at the plan. Right. Do that. I think the plan has that, right, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that. Yes.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, that far area past where the tension's going to be.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good area.
So where the proposed fence is, that's good, because they, they would stretch over here.
Yeah, you encourage that, and even if you say that that mound and the.
Yeah, in the beginning, use that part too. You could push that, you know, up a little bit. Right? Yeah, yeah.
The aging area for the team.
Yeah, right.
That's really warm up.
I mean, I understand, we still have, you know, what is this, a hundred thousand square, so that's what, that's right here, what? Acre and a half, I guess, or so? It's two, like two acres.
Two and a quarter, two and a half.
Forty-five thousand, so, okay, so it's two acres. And I mean, if we cut a little bit off each side, it's still going to be almost two acres. Um, I mean, it's something to think about. Make that decision tonight, we'll go look at it again and see what it looks like. I mean, the good thing is on the west side there, right, the, the fence there, because the dogs are kind of run to that. And to move it over, I, I don't know. It's, it's pretty wooded on the path to the left, correct? That's, that's over there.
Yeah. This was an off-leash area, not a dog park.
Correct.
These people are still responsible with controlling.
Of course, yeah.
But I would like to think just so the public's comfortable on the walkway.
If, if, if we could come to a consensus with that, with most people being happy on, on both sides of the issue, that would be wonderful. So, you know, so. It's a thought, it's something to, you know, think about, but. Well, I don't think that's it, you know what, you know, it's in anybody's backyard, um, there. It's in the middle of the park and if, uh, people that are using it, again, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the track team, but they can run anywhere and, and I'm, but I, I don't want to accommodate them, but I'm actually probably more concerned about the ADA, if that's the level this path for someone that's disabled and that's the place that can maintain that. Yeah, that's what, that's, that's what I'm saying, that, that, that would be open, and it would be open so for both, certainly for the track team, which is important. I'm not diminishing their importance, but I'm more concerned that that's the only, that's the flattest area for someone that wanted to take a walk or they're in their wheelchair or whatever, that they would be able to navigate that, that's, that's very important. And, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I don't know if any of us realized that. I didn't, but recently, so the fence would accommodate that and, and the traffic, right, Mike? What they want. This, but yeah, so we can talk to the coach a little bit, athletic director, and yeah, get, get, give their feel. Let's get their thoughts on that and, uh, I hope, you know. It works. We'll try. I don't, because I don't, I don't know, but that other, the fact about that was when I boarded on Milltown, right? Yeah. Is the one that does it for another area?
Well, if you go for the west.
West, yeah.
Just before the bush book itself.
Okay.
Very large area. Probably walk and look at it.
Oh, okay.
And that's this heavy, and it's twice as big as this.
All right. But even look, look.
Just, just for the record.
Yeah.
We just got it today. The Conservation Commission pretty much endorsed. The concept of the story.
Yeah.
They had some good recommendations to try, you know, my faces, see how things go.
Yeah.
And we know we can be bullied about it.
Yeah.
So, that should be, you know, we just got it today.
Oh, right. Yeah, I say, I saw that, yeah. So. Um, yeah, so let's go look at that other area, you know, on our own. Maybe Roche and I will go on up there. One day and I guess can visit it. Maybe that, maybe that works better. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, or that's, that's along the path too. I mean, the main thing sounds like we need to keep that path. That seems to be the main concern from I heard from most people and I think if there is, that, and that will for all intents and purposes, right? Fence in the area, that's a larger area. So, the concern of dogs running wild. Creating mayhem. Hopefully not. Gonna be experienced there and, you know, I guess to the point, it hasn't, it has not been our experience at Bicentennial. We haven't had any. Any report. We look, remember, I think we looked in the ordinance, there's no reports anywhere. Our biggest problems were in town on sidewalks and between. Residents, which we took care of already, so. All right, so let's.
You asked a little question.
Yes.
So, in terms of, in a, in a budding notice for Middletown, because that. Portion of the property that we're looking at would, would be within a certain threshold space with Middletown. How cumbersome is that process? How does it play out? What do we need to do?
Just need to identify your butters. Send them notice.
There was not, not some process on the town that give notice and it shouldn't be.
I burned some jackets, just that, you know, we opened up a can of worms with lots of sending the butters notice. They, now, now they, you know, they're not happy and that's a whole nother can of worms. I, I don't know if they would be happier in that Middletown. Maybe they don't care at all. I don't know.
I, but me.
Yes.
I was not also sure that it's next to where the.
East, that's east.
That's in.
That'll be.
There's no parking there.
Right.
There's no big parking and there are houses there. The neighbors are, who be twelve, who, everybody parking on the street there. I mean, I looked at it on the map.
There's no, there's no parking there, right?
Jim, are you familiar with what a gentleman referred to, it's next to the mountain farm? I'm just looking it up on the map. North, northeast of that property about Middletown. I don't see a good way to park there. And we have been trying to create efficient work here.
That's.
Yeah, use, use what we have and have. Yes, and parking seems to be the big issue at Bicentennial with the neighborhood. Um, I think most, I think we've all been there. We all know what.
Yeah, that, well, that and the restrictions on the land, you know, financing, the purchase of the land. That's always been a point of contention by the Conservation Commission. Whereas when I have a problem with the creek, but yeah, I just had to thank you. Watch anybody else in the other towns or getting near houses and, you know, again, takes away, you know, hopefully issues. That we don't want to create. But I, I think we look at that property to the west and. Right, like you mentioned, Roche.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you go.
That's on the path that goes to the left.
Right, you have the handy.
We're talking about.
Right. If you're going left on that.
Yeah.
And the west coast order.
Right.
And it's both broken, there's thick vegetation.
Right.
Probably have it.
Yeah. Okay. Maybe we'll look at that then.
So, we can look at that and it's, it's actually, at least on the map, looks like voice is much more bigger.
Yeah. So, when we look at that, maybe if we.
And there's no one, no path around there, so nobody can.
Oh, right. Is that easy to get to? I guess you have to work on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, how far is that? Well, that's, that's.
It's not that far.
I would make sure that we.
We should walk and see that.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And check with the AD too, because I know he said that they don't necessarily always use the paths sometimes. So, grassy.
Yeah.
Sure, he knows what's going on.
No, we'll, we'll ask them what they do on that end and we'll ask them if the fence works for them, which it sounds like it would, Mike, based on your experience.
Yeah, I, I mean, for me, experience wise, I've only seen the.
Yeah.
There's press.
Yeah.
I haven't seen the. Berlin Heights, they, they.
Yeah.
Figure area that they were.
Yeah, so we could have.
So longer.
Right. Yeah. I, you know, I just think there's plenty of room there to work this out, it seems like, and, you know, make everybody. Someone happy and, and, and safe. And ADA compliant. All of that's important, so. I feel like we could get there. All right. So, number, number four.
How much you want to know? This is something that we, these for the last few years, I've been bringing to you, cheer the Connecticut Assistance Act. For the tax credit program, it provides tax credits to business firms that pay cash investments to ongoing community programs. Programs must be approved by the municipality in which programs offered. And the Department of Revenue Services. This year we have two proposals submitted by the Putin's Grand Center. First one is for the efficiency initiatives. Fifty-eight thousand, one oh five, and the second one is a program serving to income people that are costing a hundred fifty thousand. And they do serve. In one, from the Congregational Church, the standard submitted one, it's for the first phase of the no replacement. Should win energy efficiency and that's for twenty-four thousand. So, for the purpose of this action that you're asking is. It requires the council of the scheduled public hearing. June, you said June seventh, and also appoint me. The liaison for the town of Welland to handle the. And with the subject matters.
Okay, so make a motion on the public hearing. Move support proposals from Putin's Grand Center and the National Church. For twenty twenty-two Connecticut neighborhood. Tax credit program and studying a public hearing. On two o'clock seventeen minutes to discuss the proposals from the. And regional church. For the twenty twenty-two CP mayday credit program.
Second on that?
We'll second that.
Thanks. Let's just schedule a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the second motion. Second on that?
Second that.
Well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, right, so moved? All right. Um, I, all right, if we could just pass on the appointment for tonight, I just wanted to, I don't, I don't know when that became available, but. I don't know if anyone else knows it's available. I just wanted to see if anyone else.
In terms of the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
I would like to put one name up for consideration.
Well, I'm not gonna take motion. We're gonna wait and see because I don't, I don't know when, I guess what happens, someone resigns.
Yes.
Okay, why? You know, we weren't aware of that. I don't know if the public's aware of that, so I think it's only fairly. But the public now, everyone else wants to make an application or was interested in it and would vote on it. So, we'll just table that for now. And then we'll go. And where are we at now? We are at where? Now, managers report.
I'm gonna pass.
What's that? You're gonna pass?
I, I have something on the.
Yes, okay, well, we, we appreciate that. And just one, one quick question, the HVAC system. So. So, I guess the plans are ready. There's drawings for the HVAC for Willer. We have the money set aside. Or we are in concept, in concept.
Concept.
And, and, and so how do we get that going?
So, that's next meeting.
Okay.
We would bring something to you. Almost to recommend to use the Appapan. To address the H P S E.
Okay, great.
And we will also bring the other capital items because some of them will have to come from unbalance or some of them by appropriating. Remuneration.
For what?
Success revenue.
Is it H?
No, the capital.
Oh, the capitals, yeah.
And then some from savings and expenditures. Remember, when you go through the whole budget project.
Yeah.
You're predicting a surplus.
Right.
And we can address some of these things in the surplus.
Right.
So, I'm not exactly sure how much Kevin and the board of finance will be ready to release at this point. We are still in April.
Right, right.
Because. Probably have to wait until the books are closed in the final hour, but we'll be comfortable releasing some of it, but see if they can get a.
Okay, but, but the HVAC.
That's a break.
That should be, we have the funds for that, right, to start that?
We have it. We have talked about it.
Yes.
Officially.
Correct. We could get that going.
It would be good if we can do that.
Yeah, because I can start on that, at least on Willer.
And then at some point, you do, you have a plan to do the other two as well.
Yes. Yeah. I guess the other two are using some, right? They use some in, in classroom units. Sort of units, right?
Yeah.
Which is okay. We've talked about that. That's for now, till we get to the other two schools. And I, I guess Griswold would be next, from what I understand. So, yeah, I think covered. The, the last one will, will do just because of its size and location. I guess I think Griswold seems to be, needs more attention, I Griswold. From what I understand, but we'll cross that bridge once we get Willer going. Okay. Um, special committee reports. We're, we're kind of done. We've done with our special committees. The only special committee coming up, I guess, is the. Try to revision committee, which are already established, the first meeting, right, I think.
They're meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow.
Sorry. Yeah. And it will be remote also.
Tomorrow night at six.
Six o'clock.
With the fun begin, okay, um. Concert communications.
Those who have stuck it out with us tonight.
Yes, that's, that's certain. Well, you know what? We had a good, that's okay. You know what? You know, I know, I know it takes a long time and we certainly know, you know, it's just late and we're all getting tired and. But it was good to have residents come and that's all right. We like it when they come and talk to us because then we know, you know, information. A lot of times we don't hear crickets and. You know, we don't know what people are thinking, so that's, that's good. And so. Yeah, the input, no, it's good, you know, so we can craft our plans and just about that June second notice. So, I might get, just get with you on that. Maybe I'll put a statement in there. I'll put a statement in there. What are you gonna do, take an ad, you think?
Well, that, that's real guarantee.
I know. What, what is up with the citizen labor? You can't seem to get anything. Are they not even covering for all? I mean, they're at our, they're at some of the ribbon buddy. They don't seem to be.
Not hearing.
They're not here anymore either. I mean, that's, you know, it's called the Berlin, the Berlin citizen. I would hope they would get some stuff in there about. They were, they've had some changes. Yeah, probably, right?
They haven't, that's probably part of it.
Nobody, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably part of it, yeah. Well, they have a new, that new lady, the reporter, right? The one lady, though, she covers other things too, right? I mean, it's just, you know, it's frustrating because I know we do try and get stuff out there. So, yeah, okay, and add, that's probably.
So, I just want to make sure as far as that I understand this.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna be a public forum. The council is hosting this. It's gonna be a council meeting.
Okay.
With the public forum, is that correct?
Does it have to be a council?
No, I, that's what I want to find out. Okay, so you're just doing it as a public forum, that's it?
I want to speak with Brendan.
Okay.
We're gonna put a little, a little, they have a power.
All right, and I don't care how, I just want to know if.
No, just a public forum.
Okay.
Just, just, just information sharing.
Yes.
Well, yeah, it was done by the President Committee.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, no, so.
Yeah.
You don't want to be in a council meeting.
No, no, no.
Then you gotta.
Right.
Force it and then get added to the agenda of the council, so. Just presentation and especially like.
So, get the information out. Yeah, get it out of there.
Okay.
And quite, and as long as there's not a discussion of the forum of the council.
No.
Right. Right, they're doing the presentation, that's the council that's observing.
Yeah.
That's fine, but there shouldn't be any deliberative.
No.
Right.
Discussion.
Right. It's just for the, the public, get them information and, you know, they can ask questions, right? We can answer the best we can, but again, no, right, no discussion. Right, yeah, that's not the purpose of that, nor is it the purpose of the senior center.
Okay.
Same presentation. Get it out there, which is the PowerPoint, right, Mike, that they already kind of have some of.
Yeah, there's the PowerPoint in the reporter, pretty much.
Okay, so.
I think it's because it's a PowerPoint, you're able to display it.
Right.
Of course.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, I just might get that out there. And then the copies out there, the written copies is.
I can do that.
Right, we'll get, get out there. We have, we have a couple of weeks to get.
Yeah.
That out there, right? Okay. Um, any other country communications? If not, I know you guys want to stay here longer. All right, so we're accepting of minutes of motion for May third.
And we accept the minutes from the May third meeting.
Second on that?
Second that.
Thanks. All right, thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie, we will go ahead and make a motion to go into a different session. Second on that?
I'll second that, but can I just interject for one second? There's two topics that we're gonna be discussing. Is there any way that we can change the location of two to one and one to two, please, so that I can dismiss myself after the first item? Which is now listed as the second item.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can, we'll do that.
If that's okay.
No.
It's active discussion. It doesn't matter the order. Okay, I just want to be sure that we're clear on that.
We'll do two first, Donna, when we go into.
Just for the, there are three items.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Three?
Last item has two, that is a litigation.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay, so. Oh, okay, so can you talk about, talk about the, the one of them? Yeah, okay.
There's no, it's only in order for the public to know that you're gonna do it. What you do in executive session is not.
Oh, that's fun stuff.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
We can't know, right? So, we're, so who's in? Obviously, trained in aprio. Yeah. Manager.
Yeah, and you have the number from last time, same number.
Uh, same number as last time.
Your text shouldn't have, what kind of my name?
I don't know if I saved your text, Arrocha. Sorry about that.
We, I think we might need to text Brendan, too. I don't know if he said he was gonna have a call in later in the evening.
Let's see if I still have it.
We can do that after we.
Did everybody say yes?
Yes, we all said yes, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
Oh, okay, I, I have it, Arrocha. I have it, okay. Yes, I can send that to Brendan.
He might be able to make that. So.
Okay.
Go ahead and for one moment.
We're going into an active session. I'm ending the, um, the meeting. Okay, thank you. Give me a minute to get in there.